I would like to call on the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We have a whole team here to serve City of Westminster. We want to be effectively working for the city and for the people of Westminster. Today, day is August 2, 2023, and the time is 6:30 PM. I would like to call to order. And Planning Commissioner Clerk, would you please make the roll call?
Certainly, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Power.
Here.
Commissioner Wolpert.
Here.
Vice Chair Hamadi.
Here.
And Chair Bowie.
Here.
All Commissioners are present.
We will now do the flag salute, and I would like to ask Don Anderson to help us with this salute.
Please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we move to item number three, report from the Planning Secretary regarding the late communications.
Thank you, Chair Bowie. There are no late communications for tonight's meeting.
Okay. Item number four, expedite communication. This section is intended to allow on official, the opportunity to review any disclosure regarding site visits or expedite communication about a public hearing and regular business items. Are there any expedite communications to report?
Yes, Chair Bowie, I did visit both of the sites that we will be considering this evening.
I myself did have a chance to visit the site yesterday, too.
Chair Bowie, was it both sites or just one or the other site?
Oh, the site related to Caro Cape.
Eight point two. Thank you so much.
Right. Item number five, special presentation. Are there any?
Chair Bowie, there are no special presentations.
Okay. Item six, oral communications. Planning Commission Clerk, please read the procedure into record.
Certainly. This is a time of the meeting that members of the public may address the Planning Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address the public hearing item shall do so at the time of the public hearing. Unless extended by a majority vote of the Planning Commission, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the Planning Commission, please complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission Clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium and at that time state your name and city of residence for the record. That is optional. Chair Bowie, I have one request to speak form for Ms. Terri Rains.
Okay.
Good evening. As I reported to you at your last meeting, Vice Mayor Nam Kwon-Wen had ordered a city council review of your case number 2022-370, a CUP to establish a Pace affiliated elderly day healthcare center at 8291 Westminster Boulevard, which you approved 5-0 on May 3. I was shocked to learn planning commissioners are not formally notified when a member of the city council challenges a decision made by this commission. Commissioners have a right to be formally notified anytime a city council member requests a review and wants to potentially override a decision made by this body. There was absolutely no legally allowable reason for to reverse this commission's decision on that case. Vice Mayor Wen stated written reason for the review was, quote, "The proposed project at Pace facility with exclusive onsite medical treatments for only enrolled seniors should be further vetted as it will generate more vehicle traffic to this already busy transportation corridor," unquote. What a stretch from reality that statement was. Yet during the public hearing at the council meeting, he never once even mentioned that as a reason. Both he and Mayor Wen were opposed to this project at this specific location, but did not provide any credible reasons as to why. I spoke with the applicants at Link during the July 12 city council meeting when their public hearing was noticed for. They were forced to wait over four hours only to be told after 10:00 PM that their hearing would be pushed to the next city council meeting. So the hearing took place on July 26. The applicants were joined by OC Healthcare Agency's former director, Dr. Clayton Chow, and Garden Grove Mayor Steve Jones in support of their project. They were all baffled by the review request and even more so by the discussion they heard that night. Vice Mayor Wen made outlandish claims that this facility would somehow negatively impact emergency and ambulance response in the city. Even after it was explained to him that Pace would contract for and pay for ambulance services to their facility, he and Mayor Wen continued to argue against the project. After an hour and a half long debate, the motion to uphold this commission's decision was finally approved. Vice Mayor Wen voted no, but after Mayor Wen voted yes, Vice Mayor Wen changed his vote to yes, so it ended up passing 5-0. Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Hamadi, you were absent from the last commission meeting. Based on comments made by you and Chair Bowie at the May 3 meeting, I want to reiterate, there won't be visitors to the center. You cannot put surveillance cameras inside patient areas. Ever hear of HIPAA? All patient loading and unloading will be done near the rear of the site, and the vans will likely be parked offsite when not in use. I would encourage all of you to watch the July 26 city council public hearing on this case, and please remember, your scope regarding individual projects is limited to land use evaluation only, ensuring projects are consistent with the general plan, any applicable specific plans, the zoning ordinance, and other land use policies and regulations, not to dictate how businesses conduct themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Bowie, I have no other speaker cards. Would anyone from the audience like to speak during oral communications? Seeing none, I believe we can close oral communications, Chair Bowie.
So I will now close the oral communication and move on to the next item. Do you want to do comment?
Yes.
Yes. We have a comment from one of our member here. Please.
Just respond to your statement you said right now, we're dictating how everything goes. That's incorrect statement. What I said at the beginning, to put cameras inside, but then after the back and forth discussion about the cameras inside the room shouldn't be, I agree with that, but I said should be outside and in the hallway. That's my statement.
And regarding to your opinions, as usual, I would like to ask for a copy of that comment. So we would like to put in our record in writing. Would you please have a copy of that or take pictures of your opinions and send it to us?
Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Rains is asking to approach to respond to the discussion.
No, she cannot.
Okay, and can you?
And just a reminder to the planning commissioners, you can make a very, very short response to whoever comes up to oral communications, but generally, just because somebody speaks during oral communications does not mean that it is agendized on the agenda. If you would like to make it a subject of an agenda in the future, that's fine, but as of now, that adult daycare center is not on the agenda, so we can't discuss it.
Thank you.
So Chair Bowie, the next item is minutes. I would like to make a brief statement about minutes since we have a majority of commissioners that are new. I don't believe the commission is aware that we used to have a process that was allowed by Jones Mayor because we had some attendance issues in prior commissions. So the rule is you may motion or second on the minutes if you were present, but as the body as a whole, we would vote to approve only so that we don't have a case where we don't have a quorum for our minutes. So for the commissioners that have been absent on these prior minutes, you are allowed to abstain if you wish, but as a practice, we have usually approved the minutes as a whole body. But Chair Bowie, if you'd like to take the minutes either individually or at the same time, that would be up to you.
Yeah. Now I would like to take the minutes and ask for the approval of the minutes on May 17 and July 19, 2023.
I'd move approval then, Chair Bowie, of the May 17th and July 19th minutes.
Mr. Chair, can I request that we take the items up separately? Just because I wasn't present on May 17th, I do want to abstain on that one.
Okay. So.
Could I make a friendly amendment to your motion, Don, and just move that we only, we start with the approval of the May 17th?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, so I would decide, I would move to just approve the minutes of May 17th at this time.
I'll need a second.
A second.
And a roll call vote for May 17th. Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Power.
Abstain.
Commissioner Wolpert.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hamadi.
Yes.
And Chair Bowie.
Yes.
Those pass 401 with Commissioner Power abstaining.
And I'll move to approve the July 19, 2023 minutes.
I'll second.
And Wolpert. So roll call vote for the July 19th. Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Power.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolpert.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hamadi.
Sustained.
And Chair Bowie.
Yes.
All right. Those also pass 401 with Vice Chair Hamadi abstaining.
I wasn't present.
Now we open for item eight, public hearings. Planning Commission Clerk, would you please read the procedure for people to participate?
Certainly. Anyone wishing to speak on an open public hearing should complete a blue speaker, I'm sorry, excuse me, blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission Clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium and state your name and city of residence for the record. That is optional. Each attendee will have three minutes to comment on each public hearing item. The applicant or their designee will have 12 minutes to speak and will also be provided a three-minute rebuttal, with the exception of the applicant or designee. All attendees may speak only once. The Planning Commission may use its discretion to allow a speaker to exceed the allotted time or may ask a speaker to return to answer additional questions. So the next you would, you would call for the planning manager to introduce the item, Chair Bowie.
Okay. So item 8.1, case number ENT 2023-0043. I would like to call upon the planning manager to present the item 8.1 to the public.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bowie, and good evening, members of the commission. This is a project that involves a tentative parcel map extension of time. The location is 8151 Eighteenth Street, and at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our senior planner first, who will provide the commission and the public with the presentation.
Thank you, Steve. I have a very brief presentation. Good evening, Chair Bowie, members of the planning commission. Way back in March 17, 2021, the planning commission approved a tentative parcel map. Can we please switch the screen? The planning commission approved a tentative parcel map on March 17, 2021 to allow the subdivision of airspace for condominium ownership for two condominium ownership units on property located at 8151 Eighteenth Street, which is actually just up the street from here. And just to go, per the subdivision map act, the planning commission has discretionary authority to approve a tentative parcel map, and then shortly after that, once it's approved, then the applicant is required to file a final parcel map, and it needs to be recorded on the property title. So that filing and that recordation on the title needs to recur, occur within 24 months after the planning commission approval. However, the planning commission grant an extension of that for a maximum of up to three years. In this case, the final parcel map was not recorded within the 24-month period, so therefore the owner is requesting an extension. The delay is due to a few factors, one of them being that the project engineer did pass away, and it did take some time for the owner to find a new engineer and that engineer to kind of get caught up and up to speed with this, the progress of this tentative parcel map. And then, of course, COVID-19 kind of delayed some of the progress. So staff does find those reasons valid and recommends that the planning commission do approve the extension request. I'm available to answer any questions, and the planning, excuse me, the property owner is in the audience as well. Thank you.
Any of the planning commissioner has any question on this item?
I have a question. Is there anything that would prohibit the applicant from seeking a further extension if needed?
Actually, the zone, I mean, the subdivision code only allows up to a maximum of three years, so this would be the extent of their extensions.
And then, sorry, one other question. The original amount of time they had to complete the project was 24 months, and we can go up to three years. If we were to do something lesser, like another 24 months, at that point, could they come back and seek an additional 12 months if needed?
Yeah, I believe cumulatively, it can go up to the maximum of three years.
Thank you.
One, one question for me. I was looking through or for the date for when it was applied for the extension. Do you have that handy real quick?
March 7.
March 7, okay. So 10 days before the two-year deadline?
Correct.
Perfect.
Any more questions? Well, I would like to open the public hearing and ask the planning commission clerk to call any people who would like to present.
Certainly, Chair Bowie, we have one speaker card for this item. It is the applicant or authorized agent, Ms. Ann Nguyen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ann Nguyen, and I live in Henderson, Nevada. Can you hear me okay? So again, my name is Ann Nguyen, and I represent the agenda 8.1. I live in Henderson, Nevada, and I'm here for any question that you may ask on this project.
It appears there's no questions. They can possibly call you back, but.
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
Within the 24 month that you're going to get or three years extension, how soon are you going to do the subdivision? Will there be any more delay after that?
Hopefully not. We are pretty much the end of the project, and I think right now we're waiting for the HOA to, it's actually right now is under the engineer division to review that HOA plan to see if any, anything need to be, you know, correct before they go to the finalize and record through the county.
But you will for sure start something within the three years?
That's something that I'm not familiar, so I guess I need to talk to, you know, it is basically up to the, the engineer division how soon that they will approve that, a review and.
Vice Chair Hamadi, they have been in the process, so they've already submitted something. So it's been under review, but again, the delays have been some of the other kind of underlying factors that were kind of presented earlier, but they have been in the process.
Okay. That's great.
Any more questions from us? Yeah.
Ms. Nguyen, I believe there's no other questions at this time, but they may call you back if there is.
Thank you.
Chair Bowie, I don't have any other speaker cards. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak on item 8.1? Seeing no other speakers, Chair Bowie, I believe we can move down the rest of the agenda.
Okay. So any of the city staff have anything would like to add to the, before we close the public meeting?
No, thank you.
Okay. So do we have to make any motion for the item 8.1 now?
Chair Bowie, this would be the time, there is another item that is typically discussed at this time where if there's time for any additional questions from the commissioners, and then just an official close of the public hearing. So if, if the commissioners would like to have any additional questions, it doesn't look like there's any questions being formed, but, but then we'd have to have an official close of the public hearing.
Should we like to both in?
Okay, sure. And then this would be the time for any comments or any kind of motions.
Yeah, we open for comments or any other questions, please.
I move approval. Just need a second.
A second.
Okay, and before we take the roll call, Chair Bowie, would it be okay if I read the recommendation into the record just so it's a little easier to process the minutes of the meeting after?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. The recommendation is that the planning commission adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Westminster approving a three-year extension of time for a tentative parcel map associated with property located at 8151 Eighteenth Street as asset parcel numbers 097-062-14. And on that note, a roll call vote with a motion by Chair, Vice Chair Hamadi and seconded by Commissioner Wolpert. Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Power.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolpert.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hamadi.
Yes.
And Chair Bowie.
Yes.
Okay, and I believe at this point, Steve usually has a comment.
Yes, for the record, this decision of the planning commission is final unless it filled within the subscribed amount of time. The appeal date will end on August 17.
Great. Now we will move to item 8.2, case number 2022-0381. I would like to call upon the planning manager to please present the item 8.2.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bowie. This, in this project, case number 2022-0381 involves two conditional use permits. The property location is not. The property location is 9200 Bolsa Avenue, Unit 233. And at this time, I will turn it over to Associate Planner Sandy Kim, who has a presentation for us tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. This is a presentation for planning case number 2022-0381, the proposal to operate an indoor entertainment facility and offer on sale and consumption of beer and wine, and make a determination of public conveni...
Can we get the PowerPoint up on the screen, please?
I will start all over again. This is the planning case 2022-0381, a proposal to operate an indoor entertainment facility and offer on sale and consumption of beer and wine, and the city must make a determination of public convenience or necessity for the proposed alcohol license, property located at 9200 Bolsa Avenue, Unit 233. The project site is located within an indoor shopping mall called Asian Garden Mall. Asian Garden Mall is located just south of Bolsa and in between Magnolia and Bouchard Street, which are the major streets. The project parcel is developed with a two-story indoor mall with 620 on-site parking spaces, and the applicant is proposing to occupy a vacant 2,952 square foot tenant space for their operation of indoor entertainment. The surrounding land uses consists of other commercial uses to the north, east, and west; to the south, our residential uses. Additionally, there are some industrial uses to the east and west side of the project site. The subject site is located in Moran Street, specific planned zoning district with a mixed-use Little Saigon general plan designation. The properties on the north, east, and west are zone mixed-use 40, and is also designated as a mixed-use Little Saigon district in the general plan. Properties on the south comprise of single-family homes and mobile homes. The applicant is requesting for two conditional use permit to operate an indoor entertainment facility and to offer on sale and consumption of beer and wine. The proposed karaoke is a form of indoor entertainment similar to like billers or bowling alleys, where a group of patrons can book a table, a pool table, or a bowling alley for specific blocks of time to play games and consume alcohol. Similarly, the karaoke patrons will be able to reserve karaoke rooms for block of time and consume beer and wine and prepackaged snacks that they're offering. The applicant is also requesting for the city to make a determination of public convenience or necessity for the proposed on-sale beer and wine. The determination of public convenience or necessity is also known as PCN for short, and this is requirement based on the California Business Professional Code, which states that when an undue concentration of alcohol license and/or high crime exists, the city must determine whether the proposed project would benefit the public by issuing the alcohol The project site is located in census tract number 992.22. According to the Westminster Police Department, there are currently unsold alcohol licenses, and as you can see, licensed locations are spread out through the census tract area where the commercial uses are developed. The proposed on-sale alcohol license will be the seventh on-sale license in the subject census tract, making the census tract oversaturated with alcohol licenses. Location of the businesses where the existing licenses are obtained are shown on the area map with green dots, and each of those numbers coincide with the number of licenses that's on the table. Further explanation of alcohol license types and name of the business are provided on the table as well. Sorry. The business operator plans to rent out rooms as service to patrons who want to sing along to recorded music in a private group setting and order prepackaged snacks and beer and wine, and the proposed business hours are Monday through Sunday, 2:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. The proposed floor plan is identified, the proposed floor plan identifies eight karaoke rooms, a reception area, two storage rooms, which will also work as a prep area, and two restroom, one man, one woman. Karaoke rooms include four karaoke rooms that could accommodate up to 12. The medium rooms could accommodate up to 15, and there is one large room that can accommodate up to 20 patrons. And the floor plan also shows that there is a secondary access entrance located on the east side of, east side of the floor plan to be utilized when Asian Garden Mall closes, which closes at 6:00 p.m. The proposed entertainment and on-sale alcohol uses are permitted in Moran specific plan with approval of conditional use permits, and the subject site provides sufficient on-site parking spaces with 297 surplus parking spaces that's on-site. The nearest residential uses is 360 feet away from the karaoke facility. The uses are also compatible with surrounding uses as I discussed during the surrounding land use sites. All activities will be conducted inside the mall building. After the mall is closed at 6:00 p.m., a secondary access is provided for their patron. Police Department does not object to the proposed project, and according to the Westminster Police Department, the project is located in the Police District 34, and it is considered a high-crime area. Based on 12 months' average crime count per police districts, the average count is 102, whereas the subject district has 160 crime counts within the past 12 months. However, the Westminster Police Department does indicate that there has not been excessive police reporting at the subject mall in the past 12 months. Specifically, the mall received 24 vehicle burglaries, one grand theft, two petty thefts, vehicle issues, and fraud and trespassing. However, there has not been specific issues with alcohol-related or existing karaoke that's in part of the restaurant use. As previously indicated, the proposed on-sale beer and wine is located in the census tract, and it allows six on-sale alcohol licenses, which this proposed license request makes a seventh. Therefore, according to the state law, the city must make a determination whether the proposed alcohol use would serve public convenience or necessity. Westminster Police Department determined that public convenience would be served by offering on-sale, offering on-sale and consumption of beer and wine to karaoke patrons while singing. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the planning case number 2022-0381, subject to conditions of approval, and make determination of a public convenience or necessity as required by California State. This concludes my presentation, and I can't answer any questions that you may have. Additionally, the applicants are here to answer any questions that you may have related to operation of the business. Thank you.
Do any of the Commissioners have any question?
I do, Chair. One quick question. It noted on the six current beer and wine permits that are in that district, one of them was at 9200 Bolsa as well.
Yes.
Can you put that slide back up so we can see what that was? So that was Bliss Restaurant Lounge? Is that correct?
Yes.
So that's in the Asian Garden Mall currently?
Yes.
Okay.
And they also have Anslar Karaoke.
Just have a quick question. Are there any current tracts that would be defined as oversaturated, or would this be the first within the city?
We, I don't have which specific census tract has oversaturated areas, however, this is not unique.
Thank you.
I have a question about our operation. What is the closing time for this karaoke, and is it affecting the area around that place?
So I have indicated that the proposed operation is Monday through Sunday from 2:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Any of us have any questions, please?
I do. A quick question. There will be any gambling in there? Any machines?
No. And conditions of approval includes a language that prohibits any type of gambling or gambling devices.
Okay. Thanks.
Well, at this time, if we don't have any more questions, we would like to open to the public.
And Chair Bowie, you'd like me to call the people to speak?
Yes, please.
Perfect. I have several speaker cards for this item. I'd like to call the applicant, Mr. Steve Bowie, up.
Good evening, Chair Bowie and Commissioners, Vice Chair. I want to, my name is Steve. I am a resident of the City of Westminster. I want to come here to seek your consideration and support to propose a vibrant karaoke business at Asian Garden Mall. Our vision is to serve as an entertainment and cultural hub for leisure entertainment. We want to promote social interactions, a sense of community and togetherness, and we want to contribute to the cultural enrichment and even economic growth to the city. We are, we could all agree that karaoke is kind of a universal love form of entertainment that brings people together for all types of people, and I want to offer this to residents and tourists, the opportunity to maybe showcase their talent, their singing, and to celebrate culture through music. I know there might be some possible concerns, and we thoroughly assessed the impact of our business, noise level, traffic flow, and other aspects that may affect the neighbor, and we're committed to cooperating with local authorities and adhering to all the regulations that will maintain harmony in the community. I request for your support and approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
If the applicant, are you done?
Yes.
I have some questions, if that would be...
Please. Go ahead.
Okay. Have you talked to the adjacent tenants in the mall about your proposed project?
I have not personally. I know that my property management team has, and they're here with me today.
Okay.
But we did send out that letter, and we have informed all of our tenants.
Okay. And do you operate other karaoke?
I have managed previous karaoke lounges, and I do have experience in managing it, yes.
And have they served beer and wine?
Yes. So typically, what we want to do is just serve beer and wine, no hard alcohol, just as refreshment for the patrons, yes.
And how would you prevent or ensure that hard liquor is not brought in by your customers?
We will have security staff that's there during all business hours, and we have cameras set up in every room.
Okay. And then, in looking at the layout of the room and the description of the materials to be used, it had a reference to windows. Was there be a window?
Yes, every room will have a window, yes.
So that from the hallways, you can look in, or the security staff can look into the room as well as the cameras?
Yes, correct.
In the room?
Yes.
Now, and on that, on that floor plan, it seemed that it was showing, do you have, there's a large monitor in each room, I'm assuming, that has the words of the song?
Yes, so it will have a TV, and the song will be playing with the words for the patrons to sing.
And it looked like the monitor was right by the window. Are they separate?
No, they will be set on the opposite side of the window.
Okay, thank you. And then, you'll be closing at 2:00 a.m., and are there any other businesses in the mall that are open until 2:00 a.m.?
No, there isn't any other business.
So I'm just thinking from a, I guess, a safety standpoint, you have security people there?
Yes.
In your facility, and when people are leaving at 2:00 a.m., that's a large parking lot, and it's somewhat isolated. Is there any security being considered for the patrons to ensure that they exit safely?
Yes, as a business, we have, we will be hiring our security, and for the mall, they have 24-hour security as well, which will bring the patrons down.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my question.
I have a question. When you operate, do you have your own security within your premise?
Yes, we will be hiring security during business of operations, hours of operations, I'm sorry.
I have a question. My question is, inside your store, will it be soundproof?
Yes, so the karaoke rooms are designed to be soundproof. That's in the part of the planning, yes.
Okay, that's awesome.
I have another question about ventilation, because within that area, you have many small rooms.
Yes.
I want to make sure that you have enough ventilation and fresh air intake into, to protect the clients and customer, make sure it is well-ventilated, and also no smoking site to be enforced. Is it, would it be done?
Yes, we'll enforce all of the regulations that's necessary. As far as ventilation, the ventilation systems are, I believe, been split into three, so there's adequate ventilation for each room.
Okay. Any Commissioners have any questions?
I believe they're done. They may call you back, though.
Okay. Thank you for your consideration. Sorry.
Now I would like to...
Oh, Chair Bowie, we have a few more speaker cards to call.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Would you please?
The next speaker will be Tom Nguyen.
Yeah, my name is Hang Nguyen. I will be partner of Steve Bowie. I will be a full-time manager and running the business of the karaoke. Matter of fact, I just, I just moved to, in the back of Garden Mall about five months I moved in the Mobile Home Park, so actually I can walk to that business, 10 minutes, to walk and to run the business karaoke.
Are your, are your comments completed, sir? Are your comments completed?
Yes.
Okay. Would there be any questions of the speaker? It appears that nobody has any questions at this time, but they may call you back.
All right.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair Bowie, I do have a few more.
Yes, please.
Our next speaker will be Kathy Bukos.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners, our Chair, Commissioner Buie, our Commissioner Hamadi, our Commissioner Anderson, our Commissioner Walbert, and Commissioner Power. So thank you all for allowing us to bring this to your attention. I can just tell you, most of you know that I've been here for a long, long time at Asian Garden Mall. Actually came there when the mall was one-year-old. That was in 1988, so we celebrated our 35 years of naming Asian Garden Mall, when the governor came down and officially named Little Saigon. So we're in the business for leasing, and over the years, we've had different businesses come and go. I just wanted to try to answer some of the questions that you had, but first of all, it was interesting that you brought up the smoking. This is a non-smoking mall, even for the tenants. Now, in this case, for this property that the gentlemen are trying to establish this business, there is an outdoor deck on the outside. I don't know if you noticed it when you went over there, but if there were any people who wanted to smoke, they could go on the outside of the deck. That's where most of our tenants smoke, go out there, so that's open to the public. We have been trying and trying to get a kind of a different kind of business at the mall. You know, we're the jewelry center and capital of the world for the jewelry, but we've also become an international tourist attraction. People from all over the world, we have buses coming in every day now, from other states, but other countries as well, touring the mall. Karaoke, and I had to do a lot of education on karaoke myself, you know, which originated in Japan, and has been around for 100 years, but it is an attraction for a lot of entertainment places. It is a cultural kind of a activity to bring the families together, to have their celebrations and birthdays and events. And so we think it's really important that we kind of bring something different to the mall. And on security, we have cameras everywhere. We've got the gold center there. We're covered, inside, outside, upside down, and all over. We do have 24-hour security, live security, who man the security booth there that has all the cameras right at his touch, and he can see everything that's going on from the front to the back to the side. So, security-wise, you know, we keep a good watch on everything. I wanted to say that... Oh, oh, I'm limited on time. Oh, I thought I could talk all night.
Well, the time limit can be exceeded by a majority vote of the Commission if the Commission wishes. Otherwise, this would be the time for the Commission to ask you questions.
Oh, well, I'd be open, for me to answer, I'd be open to have questions. I'm sure most all of you have been to the mall, and there is only one other business there, which is currently kind of not open, because they're going through some issues with health and stuff, that even had a beer and wine license, so there's no other business there. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have. I'm sure you do.
Any others have any question? I would like to have a question regarding the sound decibel. Have you ever tested the symbol of music, which create the noise to the next door, especially in the back of the karaoke? There is a, 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 a whole group of people who need to sleep after 10 o'clock, and these noise will affecting them. Have you tested the decibel of that?
Well, it's inside, so it's inside the mall, of course. One other thing I just wanted to mention, because when I went to work for Bridge Creek to help manage the mall in 1988, we had a karaoke business in that very same location. 3,000 square feet of a karaoke, it's called The Dreamer, and they had karaoke, and they served beer and wine. So there was a beer and wine license there at one time, in the very beginning. And it was there for a number of years, until I think things started evolving and changing in Asian Garden Mall, especially with the jewelry. And so we needed more space, and they were kind of, had been there for a number of years and thought, you know, they're ready to retire. So, but there was, and they, and on the backside of the mall, leading out to the deck, they actually had a door going through. So you could go through the door, another exit door, to go out to the patio. And so I know that the new applicants here are proposing to restore that opening. It's been closed for years. So they're going to restore that, so it will be open to the patrons inside, to go outside to smoke and eat, or whatever, outside. Any other questions?
Another question regarding security.
Security.
I know that your book doctor has your own security, however, the owner has, has their own security group. Are there any communication and coordination between two groups to make sure that all will be well-done to preserve the safety for the people?
I'm sure we'll have our cameras all connected. Huh? Okay, so, you want to come up? This is Lena. Lena is our property manager.
She'll be coming up next.
Oh, she's, you're on next anyway, so you can respond to that. But we just think it's important to, you know, develop the mall into some other generational things that are going on. We're pretty known to be a senior citizen building. We're open 365 days a year. The mall never closes. So our security system is amazing. We've even had Westminster PD's been out there checking out our system. We have panic buttons into, straight into the police department, especially for the jewelry. But we have a live guard there 24 hours a day, and in full security during the daytime. We have patrol units that go around at night as well. And does that help you with the security?
Will there be any other questions of this speaker?
Chair, I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Again, what is your title with the mall, and did you come here in support of this business?
Well, my title for 33 years was the property manager for the mall. And I retired a few years back, and formed my own consulting company, and they hired me back to come back as a consultant. So I represent them as a consultant, and still help with the management and help with the mall. I know all the tenants, and most of them, we've, we're there, we have several tenants that are original there, that have been there for the 35 years, still there.
So you're an outside consultant representing the mall?
Yes.
And you're here in favor of?
Absolutely.
Okay, just checking, because that wasn't, it wasn't included, it was dated.
And to represent the owners of the mall, that are highly in favor of this. We've been trying to do something again that would attract another crowd and more people, and it's a mall, you know. Malls are doing things differently now. You know, a lot more entertainment going on, a lot more food, a lot more things, just to stay above water. So we just think this is an important, this will be a good addition to our mall, and I think it will be very successful, so, okay.
Are there any other questions of Ms. Bukos?
No, I don't. However, I have a question to the owner regarding his past performance with other business.
Okay, we can call the owner back after we hear from all the other speakers.
Okay, we'll do so.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bukos.
Thank you, thank you.
The next speaker will be Lina Lee.
Good evening, Commissioners. Hello? Good evening, Commissioners. This is my first time in front of the city. A little bit background about me, I have been with the company for now 25 years. I have been the property management for the last 10 years. With the mall, we are facing some differences in the older generations and the younger generations, and we're trying to always find and try to fill in that gap. And we are in support of this business. We feel that this business may fill in that gap for us. As you know, the area, most of the businesses, even the businesses in the mall closes by 6:00 PM. There is no nightlife, entertainment. There might be restaurants around, and those are the restaurants that have the beer and wine licenses, but there is no form of entertainment in any way. Most of the younger generations are going to other neighboring cities like Bellatera and Huntington Beach, or down by Diamond Jamboree in Irvine, where they have a karaoke bar as well. Other places that opened up in Stanton, Rodeo 39, you know, they have liquor and beer and wine, and I guess that's what the younger generation is. Maybe it's a little bit more taboo with the older generations, but it's not with the younger. You know, you can see, like, even in the news, in the, like, and, like, bowling alleys, like Sandy has said, or movie theaters are now introducing alcohol into the theaters. In the news recently, Disneyland is opening three new restaurants, serving beer and wine as well. So it's, it is a changing world out there, and that is something that the mall does not have, and the area does not have so much of entertainment. And that's why we're, we're in support of this. We've done other events that is more cultural, like the Night Market and the Flower Festival, and that was really good for us because it's more cultural. Karaoke is a cultural thing for us, too. It's a pastime for any of the Asian families, Southeast Asian. It's, it's in Korean families, Japanese, Chinese, Taiwanese, Thailand, it's very, the Filipinos also, great singers there. But that's, that's the reason why we, we believe in this business. We also care a lot about the mall. The mall, we would not believe in a business where we don't trust and bring bad, bad vibes and bad, bad things to the mall. There's, there would be no reason for us to go and try to promote something bad that we don't want also in the mall. So we do want to protect it as well. Thank you.
Did the Commissioners want to ask any questions before she sat back down? I'm so sorry.
No, I don't. Any others want to have a question to the?
Okay, it appears we're done. Thank you so much, Ms. Lee. Our next speaker is Ms. Teri Raines.
Yes, please.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on case number 2022-0381. A request to establish a new indoor karaoke facility with on-sale consumption of beer and wine and consider a PCN determination as required by the ABC for this project located at Asian Garden Mall, Unit 233. As I shared at your last meeting, the big question here is, why the heck did it take so long for this case to come before this commission? The applicant was first told their planning commission public hearing would be on April 19th, but then they were told there were higher priority cases for that meeting, so they were bumped to May 17th, only to again be told there were higher priority cases for that meeting as well. So they were bumped again to July 5th, but then the July 5th meeting was canceled due to anticipated lack of business. Seriously? Isn't this applicant's case planning commission business? Of course it is. Even all of that, the case was not on your agenda for July 19th either. The city cannot keep jacking around applicants like this. It's no wonder developers and businesses are hesitant to come to our city. Regarding the specifics of this case, if our police department, planning staff, and surrounding mall tenants are okay with this, so am I. And you should be, too. The only question I have concerning condition number 18, which states, quote, "There shall be no dancing, and live entertainment is limited to karaoke and live music with a maximum of three musicians singers. All such activities shall occur within the confines of the building, and outside speakers are prohibited. When entertainment is provided, controls shall be established to maintain occupancy levels allowed by the Orange County Fire Authority and are not to be exceeded," end quote. Throughout the staff report in the proposed CUP, it is clear that the business cannot operate as a nightclub or a bar. It also states that the entertainment is limited to karaoke in the eight karaoke rooms. The music for each room will be provided by karaoke machines, at least that's the way I read it, so when and where would a three-piece band even be allowed to set up? My only other concerns, which I'm sure our code enforcement and police department will closely monitor, are, one, ensure only beer and wine are sold and consumed by karaoke participants, no hard liquor ever, and no general alcohol sales and consumption. Two, ensure no minors enter and remain on the premises at any time. Three, ensure all activities in the private karaoke rooms are only karaoke and consuming beer and wine, no illegal activities. Since no one else will, I'm going to apologize to these applicants, property owners, property manager, for this unacceptable delay in hearing this case. I know you've probably been paying rent for your space all of this time, which I'm sure wasn't easy, and I support your project and encourage this commission to approve the CUPs and to make a determination of public convenience or necessity so that this applicant can move forward. Thank you so much.
Chair Buie, I have no other speaker cards. I'll just ask if anyone else from the audience would like to speak on this item. Seeing no other speakers, I believe now would be the appropriate time to call the applicant back up, since you had additional questions.
Yes, would you please? Yes, I know that you have many other karaoke businesses. And in the past, did you have any major incidents in other businesses, like karaoke, happened in your?
I've managed other karaoke businesses before, and the only thing is sometimes patrons might be too loud, or maybe consume a little bit too much alcohol. And typically, for that, we ask them to leave. But no, no major incidents.
Now, the question is about the minor people. How do you control so that children will not be coming to the karaoke?
We will card everyone that comes in.
Okay.
Check ID, yes.
And is that strictly enforced?
Yes, that's strictly enforced by our staff.
Yes.
I had another question, Chair. Are you finished, sir?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, another. So from 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM, how many personnel will be on duty?
So that will depend on the volume of our patrons. Usually, typically during Friday, Saturday, we're going to have more staff. So at high times, four to six, and when there's not too many patrons, maybe two to four.
Two would be a minimum?
Two would be a minimum, yes.
And then, so between two and six, depending on the activity level?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question. What's your plan? How are we going to advertise your business?
I'm sorry?
How are you planning on advertising your business?
Advertising? So...
Like, what crowd are you bringing?
So, the karaoke business is mainly word of mouth, and the Asian community really enjoys karaoke. Let me tell you what I currently do right now. I'm currently a consultant for Kaiser. I work with a lot of doctors and nurses, and a lot of the nurses are Filipinos, and they always want to come sing or sing karaoke, and that's my reasoning, or one of the reasons why I wanted to open this. So for the majority of the part, advertisement is not necessary. It's mainly word of mouth, and...
Would you think word of mouth will be enough business? To cover all your expenses and make money to the same time?
To start, yes. I hope.
Wish you luck.
Have any other questions?
I want another one. Would like to ask you about how you regulate people, rules and regulation on attire. People wearing clothes, how do you control it so that there's no enticing, making people create problems for the people coming to your business, premise? problems for people coming to your business premise?
We are proposing a high-end karaoke establishment. So, as long as the attire doesn't go too far, we typically will allow entry. If we see something that does not follow, like, if someone comes in not dressed, we won't let them in.
I think he's worried about bikini.
No bikinis.
Thank you.
So, there's no age limit, right? Could be 90 years old and coming singing, no problem?
21 and above, but yes.
Okay, it looks like all questions are finished. Chair Bowie, we didn't call our applicant for rebuttal yet. There was really no reason to rebut, but we might allow him to add any additional. Is there any other comments that you have about your project since you're already up?
Yeah, I just, I'm just glad to be here. Thank you for seeing me because it's been a long process. It's been over a year since I've applied, and it's taken a financial toll after a year without being able to open. So, I just want you guys to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, now, I would like to call on the staff. If you have anything to add into the, before we close the...
No, I don't.
Do the Commissioner have any additional questions? If none, then we would like to close the public hearing.
Chair Bowie, I think we've received an excellent staff report. A lot of background. The police department has no concerns with this project if the conditions are complied with. We've heard from the applicant and his staff and the mall staff. And they've answered all their, all my questions, and I think all the questions that have been asked. I think this is a great location. It would not interfere with residential uses. That's always a concern with karaoke. And we've got a good buffer of industrial on each side. There's 24-hour security at this location. And I would move approval of this application second right away.
And Chair Bowie, before we take the roll call vote, may I read into the record the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And just for record, that was a motion by Commissioner Anderson and a second by Vice Chair Hamadi. And the recommendation reads, "The Planning Commission adopt a resolution entitled 'Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster approving case number 2022-0381 involving two conditional use permits to allow an indoor entertainment karaoke facility allow on-sale and consumption of beer and wine, and make a determination of public convenience or necessity of PCN located at 9200 Bosso Avenue, Unit Number 233, Westminster, California 92683, Assessor Parcel Number 143-611-20." And I will do a roll call vote. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Power?
Yes.
Commissioner Walbert?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hamadi?
Yes.
Chair Bowie?
Yes.
That's 5-0 for passing. And Planning Manager?
The decision of the Planning Commission is final
So, I would like to order, and the next item for Steve to present.
Actually, that was our last item, Chair Bowie. We are now on item number nine.
Okay. Yes, we let move to item number nine, regular business.
There is no regular business.
Okay. And now, we go to reports for item number 10. Do we have any?
No reports.
Yes. And next, item 11. Any matters from the staff?
Thank you, Chair Bowie. I just wanted to thank the Planning Commission for all your hard work tonight, and also the staff, Shelley and Russ, and the PCTA crew, and Sandy and Chris as well.
So, we would go on to item 12, Chair Bowie.
Okay. Now, we move to item 12. Matters from the Planning Commission, including AB 1234. Do any Commissioners have any announcement that they would like to share with us?
I just have one. Tonya, I hope you sing some country music at the karaoke place.
So, our next would be item number 13. If you are ready for a German, providing there's no other comments. It looks like Vice Chair Hamadi did have a comment.
I was just going to comment about, I'm about business. And bringing business to the city is very important, very important. And now, people have been locked up for COVID-19 almost four years. So, it's about time for them to get out and have fun.
Any other Commissioner comments?
I just wanted to say thank you, gentlemen, for your consideration. We promise to make it a wonderful place to attend. And we all hope you will come to our grand opening and sing along all night long. Thank you.
We'll try.
Item number 13. I would like to adjourn the meeting at 7:43 p.m. The next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, August 16, 2022, at 6:30. I thank you for all your hard working today. And we would like to thanks to our group in the background, which recorded on the activities we have today. The video group, thank you to them, and all the people presented here. And thank you.
Good job.
Did you guys close the broadcast? Oh, thank you.
Thank you, my friend.
Tony, can you continue?
Karaoke, next time.
Sure.